This is a joint informal and formal session since we did not have a formal session or work session on Tuesday due to budget. So we'll start there. What I'd like to do first is, Macaulay, you haven't done it before, I'd like to ask you to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Macaulay. This is a time that we allow for, in the meeting, for public comment. We allow time for anybody to talk to the, or ask any questions of the, or provide comments, I should say, to the commission on any topic other than one. If it's on an agenda item, we ask that you wait until that agenda item. On a quasi judicial land use matter or a topic scheduled for the public hearing, and the chair may limit the length of individual comments. So I don't have any comment cards. Do we have any comment cards, Carolina? Okay. Is there anybody who didn't fill out a card that would like to comment, general comments, to the, to the commission? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on forward to, since this is a combined meeting, we don't have a consent agenda, so we'll move on to item C, old business. We have no old business. That'll move us to other business. And the first thing on other business is consideration of approval of amendment number 13 to an agreement between Yamhill County and Oregon Health Authority. And that would be number 154134, which is our board order number 17-255 into increase of funding in the amount of $3,458 for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response, or PHEP, program. So any discussions?
It's just the tuberculosis ad.
So I will entertain a motion?
So moved that we approve item D1.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Starrett that we approve item number D1. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Since it was unanimous of all three commissioners, Olson, Starrett, and Kula, and there was no opposition, that item is approved. Item number D2, consideration of approval of amendment number 9 to an agreement between the Yamhill County and Oregon Health Authority, number 153142. And this was our board order 17-2017 for mental health substance abuse disorders and problem gaming services. Mary, would you like to make any comment?
That's just the standard gambling increase there.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion?
I mean, I'm motion to approve item D2.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item D2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, no opposition, let it show, the record show that the commission, Commissioner Starrett, Kula, and Olson unanimously approved item number D2. Takes us to item number D3, and this is consideration of authorizing a notice of intent toward the Yamhill County 2019 striping projects to hip, striping, and curbing. Question, do you want to comment, or Casey's liaison, you want to comment on that?
I heard from Catherine Harvey this week, they solicited bids. This was the lowest cost bid, and they'd like to move forward with preparing the contract and putting the contract in place for this year with Hicks.
Okay, it's our, it's the recommendation of
This would just be the notice of intent.
Public Works that we create a notice of intent toward the 2019 striping project to Hicks. Striping and curbing, all entertain a motion?
I move approval of item D3.
We have a move of approval of item D3. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, let the record show that unanimously passed the, the intent toward unanimously passed the commissioner, commission with Commissioner Starrett, Kula, and Olson all voting in the affirmative. Takes us to item number D4, and that's consideration of approval of amendment number 2 to an agreement between Yamhill County and WH Pacific Incorporated, which is our original board order 11-131 for the Stag Hollow Creek Bridge Loughlin Road Project.
I can comment on this one, just a little information. Working with Bill Gilli on this bridge, and we already have an agreement for WH Pacific, so this is a change order, just site conditions, because they need to do some more environmental work. They have to come up with a fish passage plan, and also some archaeological work that needs to occur at the site, too. They, these are some new findings that came forward, so in order to accommodate this work, to get the design and the project moving forward, we need to do this for permitting.
I assume there's fish in there, right? Well, anyways, so.
And I think it's going to be pretty, it sounds like it's pretty simple since it's a clean span. It'll be much better than what is.
Okay, thanks, Ken. I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve item D4.
We have a motion that we approve item D4, and that's the amendment number 2 to an agreement between Yamhill County and WH Pacific for the Stag Hollow Bridge Loughlin Road Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, let the record show that it was unanimously approved by the commission with Commissioners Kula, Starrett, and Olson all voting in the affirmative. That takes us to item number D5, and that's consideration of approval of an easement between Yamhill County and McMinnville Water and Light for tax lot 4415-01600 for utility purposes at the Public Works Facility. So, Ken, would you like to call, you want to just make any comments on that? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, this is an easement that actually, in addition to their existing easement, it adds another rectangular sized piece to allow them access to new water mains and lines they would put in as part of the new building.
And I understand this is one of the require, one of the requirements to get the final occupants, occupancy of that building.
That would make sense. They would want this in place.
Well, then I'll make the motion that we approve the easement between Yamhill County and McMinnville Water and Light for tax lot 4415-01600 for utility purposes of the Public Works Facility. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that we've approved item number D5 with all three commissioners, Starrett, Kula, and Olson voting in the affirmative. Takes us to item number D6, and that's consideration of amending the Yamhill County, Yamhill County Accounting Function and Payroll Procedures Official Policy regarding the allowable ability of costs assigned to federal awards. And that would be our board order 18-454. So, Ken, do you have any comments?
This is to address an audit finding that we had for the previous fiscal year, and Mike's here and can probably give more technical details or, you know, or if there's questions about it.
Okay, come on up, Mike.
Well, we actually addressed this audit finding in the audit last year, but we just had the Federal Transit Authority audit last week, I guess, or two weeks ago. And they thought our finding, our resolution was fine, but they wanted a little more language in our resolution or in our policy. So all we did was take some boilerplate language out of the federal regulation and added it to our policy. We've already been following the regulation, it's just beefing up the policy a little bit. So that's all this really belong, all this really does.
Any other questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion?
I would move approval of item, move approval of item D6.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that item number D6, and that's consideration of amending the accounting functions and payroll policies, official policy regarding the allowable ability of costs assigned to federal awards. And that'll be BO 18-454 passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. You can stay over here for a while if you'd like to, Mike.
I've got enough for the last three days.
He's got numbers to crunch.
That'll take us to item number D7, and this is consideration of a letter of support and to submit an application for the 2019-21 Youth Development Divisional Juvenile Crime Prevention, JCP, state grant funds to support the Yamhill County Peer Court Program. If you read the information, I'll talk to Jessica. This is just a standard request to submit the application for the grant. So I will make a, if there's no questions, I'll make a recommendation that we provide the letter of support and submit an application for the 2019-21 Youth Development Divisional Criminal Crime Juvenile Program. State grant funds to support the Yamhill County Peer Court Program. All those in favor signal aye by saying aye. Hearing, hearing no opposition, let it show, let the record indicate that D7 has been approved unanimously by the commission. That brings us to item number D8, and this is consideration, a request by Habitat for Humanity for the 2019
so this is a change order, just site conditions, because they need to do some more environmental work. They have to come up with a fish passage plan, and also some archaeological work that needs to occur at the site, too. These are some new findings that came forward, so in order to accommodate this work, to get the design and the project moving forward, we need to do this for permitting.
I assume there's fish in there. Well, anyways, so...
And I think it's going to be pretty -- it sounds like it's pretty simple since it's a clean span.
Yeah.
It'll be much better than what is.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Ken. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item D4.
We have a motion that we approve item D4, and that's the Amendment Number 2 to an agreement between Yamhill County and WH Pacific for the Stag Hollow Bridge Loughlin Road Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let the record show that it was unanimously approved by the commission with Commissioners Kula, Sterrett, and Olson all voting in the affirmative. That takes us to item number D5, and that's consideration of approval of an easement between Yamhill County and McMinnville Water and Light for tax lot 4415-01600 for utility purposes at the public works facility. So, Ken, would you like to call -- you want to just make any comments on that? It's pretty self-explanatory, but...
I don't know if this is an easement that actually in addition to their existing easement, it adds another rectangular sized piece to allow them access to new water mains and lines they would put in as part of the new building.
And I understand this is one of the requirements, to get the final occupancy of that building.
That would make sense. Yeah, they would want this in place.
Well, then I'll make the motion that we approve the easement between Yamhill County and McMinnville Water and Light for tax lot 4415-01600 for utility purposes of the public works facility. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that we've approved item number D5 with all three commissioners, Sterrett, Kula, and Olson voting in the affirmative. Takes us to item number D6, and that's consideration of amending the Yamhill County accounting function and payroll procedures official policy regarding the allowable ability of costs assigned to federal awards, and that would be Board Order 18-454. So, Ken, do you have any comments on that?
This is to address an audit finding that we had for the previous fiscal year, and Mike's here and can probably give more technical details or, you know, or if there's questions about it.
Okay, come on up, Mike. Hate to take you away from your office just to provide a few technical details, but...
Well, we actually addressed this audit finding in the audit last year, but we just had the Federal Transit Authority audit last week, I guess, or two weeks ago.
Right.
And they thought our finding, or our resolution was fine, but they wanted a little more language in our resolution or in our policy. So all we did was take some boilerplate language out of the federal regulation and added it to our policy. We've already been following the regulation, it's just beefing up the policy a little bit. So that's all this really belong, all this really does.
Any other questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval of item, move approval of item D6.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a -- all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that item number D6, and that's consideration of amending the accounting functions and payroll policies, official policy regarding the allowable ability of costs assigned to federal awards, and that'll be BO 18-454, passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. You can stay over here for a while if you'd like to, Mike.
I've got enough the last three days.
Okay.
He's got numbers to crunch.
That'll take us to item number D7, and this is consideration of a letter of support and to submit an application for the 2019-21 Youth Development Divisional Juvenile Crime Prevention, JCP, state grant funds to support the Yamhill County Peer Court Program. If you read the information, I'll talk to Jessica. This is just a standard request to submit the application for the grant, so I will make a -- if there's no other questions, I'll make a recommendation that we provide the letter of support and submit an application for the 2019-21 Youth Development Division Criminal Crime Juvenile Program, state grant funds to support Yamhill County Peer Court Program. All those in favor signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no opposition, let it show, let the record indicate that D7 has been approved unanimously by the commission. That brings us to item number D8, and this is consideration request by Habitat for Humanity for the 2019 Women Build Project in the amount of $10,000. So, Mary, you're here, would you like to see -- you guys like to come forward and...
Come on, now you're doing well. It's your chance.
Oh, yeah. Now you can make noise for real.
Please sign, please, you know the role, the rule, the role rule.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Mary Stern, and I'm with McMinnville Area Habitat for Humanity. And this is Tenley Hart, who is one of the co-chairs of our Women Build, and this is her son Bronson. Say hi.
Bronson.
So, Commissioners, you and the Budget Committee was wonderful the last two years in awarding us $10,000 each year for a Veterans Build project. In the 1819 budget, you set aside $10,000 for us, and we were unable to find a veteran despite our very best efforts. We selected four families, and we do have a veteran, but he did not qualify for the Veterans Build program. So we were unable to use that money and request that you provided for our Veterans Build. Instead, I know that the money is still in your budget for the 1819 fiscal year, and I'm hoping that you would be willing to award it to the 2019 Women Build. And we have a homeowner, Lorena Garcia, who's worked for 13 years in Newburgh at Marquee Newburgh, one of the rehab facilities there. She's a CNA. She has three children, Miguel, and Marika, and Maya. They are 16, 12, and 7, respectively, and she's already been out on site working on the previous house and on her own house every Saturday. So we are requesting that perhaps you would be willing to support the Women Build. And I brought Tenley so she could tell you why, as a member of the public, she decided to get involved with this.
And as a mother. I'm lucky enough to have a partner with me and another child, but as you can see, I don't know how single moms do it. And I did meet Lorena at the build site, I'm going to tear up. She's an amazing woman. I just feel like this is such an amazing opportunity for her. It's a huge -- I know that there are a ton of ladies who, or a ton of women and moms who apply for this, and, I mean, everyone I speak to is just, they just can't believe what an incredible program that this is. And as a mom, I always have a little soft spot for single moms, because it's just, it's a killer, it's a killer job that they have to do. She works full-time, and she moms full-time. And the biggest thing is that these kids need some stability in their life. These kids need some stability in their life, and, you know, from moving from one apartment or one family member's house to the next, being able to qualify for this program and to be able to have a permanent house for them, we're really just contributing to their success, and then, which in turn contributes to our community's success, so...
And I have some flyers that include the family. Bronson, you want to help me? Want to bring these over?
I'm not here.
Lorena is on the inside, in the center, she and her children. And I do want to say, I know you get hit up all the time, I remember it well, for money. Since you have this money set aside for housing, it was for a veteran, I would respectfully ask that you be willing to share that with our Women Build project. I will tell you, the city of McMinnville gives us a discount on the system development, well, waives system development charges for transportation and for water, and they also give us a discount on the permit fees. And the school district waives the construction excise tax for every one of our homes as well. Plus, then we get donations. Your donation really does help us leverage other funds to bring those in for the project. And I know the needs for housing are at every single level, from homelessness and emergency housing to transitional housing, to affordable apartments and rentals, and homeownership as well. And the homeownership is the only one where the families are then contributing tax revenue through property taxes back to you and back to the school districts and to the city. So I would just ask that you consider awarding that $10,000 to our 2019 Women Build. And I did not come here on Monday asking you for more for next year. I know that you have some difficult funding requests before you, and we're in a place now where this would be, really help us tremendously move forward with our 2019 Women Build.
So, Mary, you have any questions or comments for Mary?
You know, I think back on the spirit of this award. I know this was a different board, and the spirit of this award was to help a veteran. And my only, not that this isn't a worthy endeavor, and that there aren't just candidates that are perfect for this program, but I think that when we made this commitment to our veterans, I know that we have more of an outreach now. We've got a full-time outreach, Veterans Service Outreach Specialist, who's really making inroads in the veterans' community. So it's not to say that there isn't the need for single moms, but now that we have the opportunity in our veterans' office to make more inroads with our veterans' population that have heretofore not been reachable, we haven't been able to even find out who they were, I'd like to see if we can, you know, have some success in matching up a veteran with the original intent of this program, only because we did make that commitment, and now we have another resource that we didn't have before, that maybe we could offer to you a candidate for the Veterans Build. Because I remember the first Veterans Build in that family, and they were, I mean, and when you hear their story, their story was, and what he went through, and what the family went through, and that's not to say there isn't another story on the other side in any group of us who has a need, but that would just be my initial impression.
Okay. Casey?
Yesterday, during our deliberations, we talked about, we declined to provide another fairly large sum to another group to whom we've been giving regularly large sums. And as I was remembering, yesterday we talked about how we preferred to have a more well-rounded approach to addressing some of the issues of affordable housing. And I thought, oh, this is a really good way to do that more holistic approach, rather than focusing on one nonprofit. And it's 5% of the ask that we turned down, so I would be in support of it because it's a diversity, and also because the woman and her family will be creating stability and equity in our community.
Thanks, Casey. I guess my feeling about it is, is that, you know, I know we budgeted that specifically for the veterans' program, and I agree with Commissioner Sterrett that we can do so much more with our veterans, and I'd encourage for Veterans Build that if we feel the same way, that this coming year, we ask later on to take a look with Habitat for doing a Veterans Build. But I think, when I see families like this who's trying to build that stability, and a woman that's raising three children, working full-time, and working on the house, you know, I think they, those kind of people really deserve a break, and I think this is an excellent program. So, you know, I totally support redirecting that original $10,000 from the vets' build to the women's' build. And then next year, as we talked about yesterday, and how we give funding and who we allocate funding to, I think this is a good subject for discussion of how we do this, so every year we're not sitting here deciding, trying to play who gets what, when. So I'm all for this. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion that we...
I have one more question. So I was just intrigued by how there weren't veterans out there that would qualify. I didn't understand that piece of it.
There, for the program, even though they applied, the discharge, the type of discharge, let's...
Okay.
I'll talk to you more if you'd like.
Well, no, I think for the record, we need to know why we weren't able to find a veteran. And we don't have to get into specifics or any identifying information, but I thought, boy, with all the talk we have and all the efforts that we're making to get out there and to get, and we're reaching veterans we have never reached before. And I thought, wow, we can't even come up with one veteran for this.
Right. Right. So it was, the type of discharge was family selected, but it would...
So it's a require, that's a requirement. In other words...
There has to be an honorable discharge to be considered part of the Veterans Build.
Okay. And so, there was, there were not multiple candidates? There weren't...
We had, we had probably over 40 families take initial applications, but for some reason or another, it could be they make too much money. They have to be between 40 and 60% of the area median income. It could be they had too much outstanding debt so that they wouldn't be able to make the payments for their mortgage, in which case, we work with the family and we connect them with the housing authority, folks at the Housing Authority, to be able to get their credit up to a place where they would be able to apply. And there were several that came to the initial meetings and then did not go further in the process, and we just, we did, we let every veteran who attended know that we were, you know, we were looking for at least one, if not multiple, veterans to have in the Veterans Build.
Were you able to connect and maybe work through our veterans' service?
Oh, we definitely, yeah, we reached out with, to every veterans' organization that we know. So we worked with Jerry and I think Lisa McCracken was there at the time. We worked with Nikki Volz, who used to be at Northwest Senior and Disabled Services. We worked with YCAP. And some of the folks at YCAP who they do the homeless veteran, work with homeless veterans, those folks are not yet at the stability stage where they could be ready for homeownership, but working all together and having the ability to refer back and forth, you know, here, start here, and progress through this, the system, and then come back to us when you're ready. I will say, our, last year, our Women Build mom had applied three times, and her credit was so bad when she started, that she, her credit score has risen so much, and now we just closed on her house, and, you know, it's a true success story that she, because of her first denial, and then her second denial, she continued on, and she no longer has debt, she no longer uses credit cards, she just continues, you know, making progress that way. So we don't just abandon folks who apply and don't qualify, we try and work with them so that they come back and apply when they, you know, get their credit in the place it needs to be. And if folks are earning too much money, yet not enough to afford a house, which often happens here, we refer them to community home builders, where they have a higher standard from, you know, up to 80%, and sometimes a little bit above the area median income.
So that, what is it, family sufficiency? What is that program through Housing Authority? Is that how that woman was able to get her credit up and work through that program?
Right. Right. She worked, they just helped her budget, they, she took financial courses, and yet she was able to figure out how to get rid of her debt that way. So they worked closely with her.
Well, I didn't know that it was that hard to find a veteran who qualified.
It, surprisingly, we, I think the first year we did it, we thought, this is going to be easy. And I think we had three families come to the meetings. And we, you know, we reached out to every veterans' organization in the county, West Valley and Newburgh. We even had somebody who lived in Dundee, and was, but even though that was out of our district, we were willing to say, if he qualifies, we'll get a waiver from the Newburgh Habitat for Humanity to see if we can take this, this home, future homeowner. But that man ended up moving away, and so, you know, we keep trying, and the county staff has been wonderful in trying to help us find folks, but we're, you know, we do the best we can. The American Legion has been very supportive, as you know, and they're right across the street, so they've been a great partner with us, and...
Well, maybe our new, our new outreach...
Your new, what's the new outreach person's name?
And just contact Jerry and help you...
Yeah, and he'll, okay.
But that seems like a good opportunity for future, at least.
Keep an eye, keep an eye.
Yes, right.
Casey, what you said, Commissioner, that I liked, it's just part of a holistic approach to all the different options a house. And, believe me, I worked with Commissioner Primisich and everything, and worked with Jerry.
Yeah.
Trying to get veterans to qualify for the, it's almost, it's not that the veterans aren't there, but when you look at the qualifications of that particular program, they just weren't there. But when you can put them in touch, like Mary said, when you can put them in touch with other organizations like ATYC and everything, they can help them through the financial, help them build into that stability, then you've really got a good solution.
And maybe, and maybe we'll have a veteran next year.
Yeah.
We'll have a veteran, so...
We'll keep trying.
Yeah. This might help.
Yeah.
So anyway, we do have, we do have a motion on the table, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the commission unanimously approved the request by Habitat for Humanity for the 2019 Women Build Project in the amount of $10,000. Since that is out of this year, we can process that shortly.
Immediately. It's current year budget, and this will come out of the ONC fund. That was the same place.
Right, so we'll be getting your check.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tenley. Thank you, Bronson. What's his name?
Bronson.
And thanks, thanks for reapplying with that.
Oh, well, sorry to be a pest. Sorry to be a...
Oh, you're not a pest. We love you as a pest, though, but, you know, that goes.
But I should, I will invite all of you out to the job site anytime. Maybe we'll do an elected officials' build and invite you all out and...
I'm going to supervise her.
Ah, no.
Can't get up on any roof.
You can be the cookie man.
Yeah, I can do that. Candy won't let me up on, Candy won't let me up on any roofs, though.
No, we won't, we will not let you up on any roofs.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we don't have any, that takes us to item number E, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings. Takes us to item F, announcements. One, Casey.
While he's thinking, I'm just going to talk real quick.
Yeah, please.
As you know, we're in the midst of, we're in the midst of a countywide, it's a full-scale exercise, where Office of Emergency Management, Oregon Health Authority, and our Public Health Department, and basically the whole scenario is an intentional biological attack, and this would be a dispensing of medication at various places. Right now, they're out at a point of distribution which has been set up at Grand Ron in front of their medical center. We did have a little issue at YCAP yesterday as a result, so the point of distribution was somewhat, I guess you should say...
A test of the test.
It was a test of a test, but we got through that. So I've asked Brian to, when he gets all the data back from this, to come and just do an update on how this exercise went, but it, all accounts are that it's, it is going very well. And today's the National Day of Prayer, which is going to be held at the Civic Center at noon.
And I think, you go into that, Casey?
I'm going to try to.
And I know I'm going to...
Yes, I'll be there.
You're going to be there. Okay, Casey?
After learning about, in the budget process, about the federal funds that are restricted to just wildfire prevention, and in light of having a slash pile that reached a 35-acre area up on Hyevon Road, trying, I'm talking to Brian Young, but I said, don't worry about it right now, and to see if we could develop a workshop for homeowners and landowners in forested areas to talk about wildfire prevention and what they can do on their land.
I think...
And the Oregon Department of Forestry has a program.
They are, I was going to say, ODFRDF.
Yeah.
Program that they'll gladly come and do.
So I figured, well, we have some funds, but they need funds to get them here, that I think that would be a really good use of it, especially in light of early fire...
So just imagine, yours, too, could grow into 35 acres if you burnt yours.
Boy, I tell you, it's early this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, about 45 days normally early, and that's, that's going to be dry anyways.
It's going to be a rough year.
But I would love, you know, when the time comes, I'd love for us to be able to support Brian in that work.
The only thing I have is, again, I want to thank my fellow commissioners and staff for all the work on the budget, especially the work that staff, Ken, and Justin, and the financial staff, and Caroline, and Kerry did in supporting us through the last three days. That's a very draining, very draining process, and everybody deserves a job well done, well done on that one.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that's all I have. Ken, do you have anything?
No, just that the budget finish line is still, we're still working.
Not even close for Ken.
But, Christian, you have anything?
Nope, he doesn't.
No, nothing that's related to any kind of ball stuff?
I'll speak to anyone who wants to chat with me.
Perfectly.
Thank you. Okay, nothing else? Meeting adjourned.